I'd like to call this meeting with the Westland State Council to order, please. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight led by two students from Marshall Upper Elementary, Michaela Hudson and Raymond Williams.
(Inaudible) 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 Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green.
President.
Councilman Hart.
Here.
Councilman Hammond.
Here.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Londo.
Here.
President of the God Ball.
President of the Quorum.
We'll begin with announcements and presentations. Mitch, if you want to.
Dave White.
Dave.
Good evening, Council. Thank you guys very much for having us tonight. Tonight's a very, very special night for us because we get to share with you some of the things that we do. Usually, we're not good about saying a lot of things we do because we just do it. And we want to give scholarships out tonight to six very outstanding members of the community. All throughout the year, your firefighters are out there, we're raising money, we're taking donations, where when we get off duty, that's a lot of things we do. We get out there and we try to gather up our resources as best we can and invest them back into the community, whether it's donating to a family who recently lost everything in a fire, building wheelchair ramps, or even donating to muscular dystrophy, which is near and dear to our hearts, too. This year alone, we raised over thirteen thousand dollars. So when you see that, fill the boot, that's what we're doing out there. Something big for us, we believe that when your firefighters are involved in the city, it builds a better Westland. And when we get back into the community, one of the biggest investments we can make is investing back into our youth. And we've seen that for many years. Since 2005, we've been giving these scholarships, and with these scholarships, it's totaled well over a hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
One of the things that we believe is when we get these young members of the community out here, they're setting themselves up for success. And it's our privilege to present these scholarships that honor our fallen firefighters, and we know that they're going to take these resources and do the best with them. Thank you for having us. If we could invite them up and present the scholarships with Councilman Johnson. Also, we'll bring up some of the firefighters that we have here tonight are on the scholarship committee that took the hard time to go through these applications. We had quite a few, and we appreciate everyone that applied, and just know that next year it's going to probably even be even better. Thank you. Bring you guys, come on up. When I presented these to Bill, he said absolutely ladies first, so we're going to do the ladies first.
I'm going to bring all of them.
Come on up. Alright, so we'll bring this year's scholarship award. Brianna Harvey. Sheke Wayne.
That's going to be a good one to announce.
Yeah, I put it in the pen. Madison Williams. Nathan Hines. Cody Moore. And Michael Nester. Sort of balanced out.
(Applause) 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 I'd like to say this before I get started. You are an elite group. You wouldn't be here if you didn't earn what you're going to receive tonight. I hope you take what is given to you tonight and follow a career with it. I understand a couple of you, at least one of you is an artist, so she may not use it for paramedics, but it's a great profession, guys. It's a great service to our community. I just hope you follow through with it and maybe be a firefighter, fire lady, fireman from town here. Brianna Harvey. Let me get these glasses, Phil. Brianna, always been interested in medical professions such as anesthesiologist, medical examiner, x-ray technician, last but not least, EMT. You've always wanted to help people?
Yes.
I'm not going to read this whole thing, but we've got some highlights for us. Says you like sports, you play a lot of softball?
Yes.
What do you plan on doing with your scholarship today?
I plan on becoming a paramedic and then soon enough moving to a nurse practitioner.
Very, very good. I think this will help you towards that practitioner. I know somebody else who's a paramedic that is also going to be a nurse practitioner. A great career. I'd like to congratulate you. Dave, you can do the honors.
Alright, this is our Todd Stenaway Scholarship grant. Thank you very much for applying, and this will help you towards that scholarship, towards Michigan Academy of Emergency Services. Thank you.
(Applause) 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 Sheke Wayne.
Mom.
Okay. Art has been your passion since kindergarten. A lot of you are art, study the fundamental art techniques. You want to do that? Or you already did in 2016.
Yeah.
What I see here is you've only been here in the United States since April of 2015.
Yeah.
And where'd you come from before that year?
China.
You plan on becoming an organizer for us, sponsor for scholarships? That means you're going to have other people get scholarships on Zoom.
Yeah.
What other artists did you have?
That was Encantin, I think art classes in Paris art studio.
Which award is she receiving, Dave?
The Ballyhoo Scholarship. Thank you very much.
(Applause) Madison Williams. How you doing?
Pretty good.
Pretty good. Says she grew up in a small house in Narrow Street in Westland. Father, mother, and older sister. I'm going to skip some of this and put down a little bit here. I'm just going to read one part in line here. I will not let my past determine my future, and I will not lose track of my priorities. I'm going to leave the top part out of that. There's not a lot to be said, but you also want to apply this paramedic scholarship that you're getting to help people later on down the road, I understand.
I want to become a pediatric psychologist and help other children who went through stuff and trauma like this.
And I'm not going to read it, but she did go through a traumatic period in her life, and I absolutely congratulate you on what you've become. You've earned this. You wouldn't be here if you didn't earn it. I hope your future is much better than your past. I got Nathan. Nathan, you would like to go to a respected university specializes in engineering such as Lawrence Tech? You also plan on going on a backpacking trip to New Mexico this summer? Physical fitness has become a goal? You look like you're in pretty good shape. Here's the part that really is great. Throughout your childhood and adolescence, you've been very active in scouting. As many people are aware, Eagle Scout is the highest rank that a boy scout can strive for. At present, you're very close to earning that rank. You have a few steps to go. How close are you?
I actually got it on May fifth.
Well, congratulations. Congratulations. (Applause)
Alright, that's for the Ballyhoo Scholarship. We really appreciate you applying and your graduation.
I know a little bit about, somebody Cody knows. Your uncle was Mel Moore, retired firefighter from Wayne. I worked with him a lot of years raising money for the Goodfellas. Great guy. He encouraged you to follow your dream and go into EMS. Also have a couple of paramedics and teachers explain to you that the job is one of the hardest in the field. It will have its trying days. I've heard some of the horror stories, but you believe the work in EMS field, and you will commit a hundred percent to the job and take control whenever needed. I can tell you this, and if you're going to follow through with EMS, it is a great career. You help people, the community service. Our firefighters in town here are probably the best I've seen around in a long time. I hope you make the grade, become one of the Westland firefighters.
And Tony has also received the Stenaway Scholarship, which is a full paramedic scholarship.
(Applause) Michael Nester. You graduating this year from Wayne Memorial?
Yes, sir.
Be a combat medic specialist in the Michigan Army National Guard. Will seek employment as an emergency department technician at a local hospital. This award will help you attain some of that. After attaining three to five years of experience in acute care, trauma nursing, I plan on obtain a master's degree in family nurse practitioner. That's right next to a doctor, isn't it?
Yeah.
Dave White put together three pages on each one.
We made it up.
Your goal with the paramedic certification is to teach to those that want to help people and have the ambition to provide care in any way they can. From receiving a demonstration on how to use an AED. Help me out, what's an AED?
An paramedic's trauma figure layer.
I still don't know what that is, but okay. At the age of twelve, to perform a CPR on a real person in distress at the age of seventeen. You've already got your hands on a little practice with this. Well, again, I hope you use this, and you've got a great future in front of you, I believe. Nurse practitioner is a very good field to get into. I'd like to see you use your paramedics and stay with the fire department, though, but that's just me. And I want to say this to all you guys and girls tonight. You earned this, you wouldn't be here if you didn't. We gave you a little history on these guys, and Dave hit on it a little bit. They do a great job, and I think I'm speaking for everybody up here and out there. We thank you guys for what you do every day, and to see you get back to the community, that's rare in most cases, and I appreciate everything you guys do, too. Thanks. (Applause)
I find the evening beautiful, but Mike also received the Brian A. Wookiee Scholarship for a full paramedic right as well. Thank you very much. (Applause) If you could bring your parents up, or if you were here to support, we could do a picture. If you guys want to come on up. (Inaudible) 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 Do rows, do rows. Do rows, Mike. Get her up. Cody. Amy. (Inaudible) 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 There we go. (Inaudible) 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 Alright, everybody all set? Okay. On three, one, two, and three. Thank you. (Applause) Glenn?
Good evening and thank you for having me. My name is Len Fisher, and I run the Inspire Theater. As you know from me being up here many, many times, the only community theater in Westland. Let me just say to the council and all the citizens of Westland, a huge thank you. It's because of your support, your continuing support, we're completing our thirteenth season, and it has been phenomenal. As I mentioned a couple of months ago, thank you. (Applause) In the two years alone that we've been in the building on Warren, we've seen over ten thousand people go through our doors, and we're pretty excited about that. Because not only does that keep us going for show after show, but it brings a lot of people into Westland that don't live here, to the shopping and dining district. And so, like I said, I'd like to say thank you to all of you folks that makes this possible. You found on your seats, the audience, there's cards for our upcoming show. This is our last show of the thirteenth season. This is Yankee Doodle Dandy, Song and Dance Man. It's, we positioned it right between Memorial Day and Fourth of July, because it's that kind of show. It's a flag-waving type of show. It's about a town in Colorado named Snookerville, who's celebrating their centennial, but the old widow Snooker doesn't want it to be exciting, or interesting, or anything but boring, so she's put her foot down. And yet, we have a celestial visitation from the ghost of George M. Cohen. He shows up right down the street here, nine different performances. So we're inviting all of you folks to be there. It opens June twenty-second and runs for three weekends. And we wanted to give you a little demonstration. I know it's a little bit out of the ordinary, but we wanted to show you what we do exactly. So if I, go ahead. (Music) three weekends. And we wanted to give you a little demonstration. I know it's a little bit out of the ordinary, but we wanted to show you what we do exactly. So if I, go ahead.
(singing) Grand old flag, you're a high-flying flag, and forever in peace may you wave. You're the emblem of the land I love, the home of the free and the brave. Every heartbeat's true under red, white, and blue, where there's never a boast or brag. But should all acquaintance be forgot, keep your eye on the grand old flag. You're a grand old flag, you're a high-flying flag, and forever in peace may you wave. You're the emblem of the land I love, the home of the free and the brave. Every heartbeat's true under red, white, and blue, where there's never a boast or brag. But should all acquaintance be forgot, keep your eye on the grand old flag. I'm a Yankee Doodle Dandy, a Yankee Doodle do or die. You're a real life nephew of my uncle Sam, born on the 4th of July. I got a Yankee Doodle sweetheart, she's my Yankee Doodle joy. Yankee Doodle came to London just to rock a ponies. I am a Yankee Doodle.
I am a Yankee Doodle.
I am a Yankee Doodle boy.
June 22nd, thank you very much.
Commissioner Anderson? Try and top that one.
Well, I think he was, he'll probably be happy I didn't sing. But I want to give a quick update. Thank you for the opportunity. One of the things I did want to mention is the county got some good news just recently that our bond rating has been raised to be our triple B plus. Not quite the investment grade that we would like to see, but it's still moving upwards. The, we've also hired three contractors that are in the process of doing safety inspections on all the county bridges. And after this is done, the county will determine the priority of all the bridge repairs. And there are some really old bridges, those that have gone through Heinz Park. And if you've taken a look underneath as well as on top, you'll see there's a lot of things that need working on. Some of those bridges have been there since the park was first created. For the last two or three months, I've been working with DPS Director regarding road needs. And she's advised me then about a half mile west of Newburgh on Joy Road will be resurfaced beginning in August and completed by September. Grass cutting along the county roads, I know that's been an issue. The mayor's got in touch with me in years past and we had to contract out to get caught up on that work because it's unsightly and dangerous in some cases because people can't see when they're pulling out of a driveway along one of those roads. And that should be done by the end of this week. Middle, and that would include Middlebelt, Merriman Road, Inkster Road, and Wayne Road. And as I said, it should be done by the end of the week. Commission approved a contract with a vendor, as I said, to get this caught up. The county crews are so small and depleted that they just, it would probably be much longer for it to be done if we hadn't hired a crew to come in and help with that job. Federal grant will soon be paying for a study, an improvement plan for Nankin Lake. As everybody knows, it's at Heinz and Heinz Drive and Ann Arbor Trail. And additional improvements to Heinz Park will be rolled out this late summer and fall with quite a few improvements through the areas that we all enjoy. We're still in a process of reviewing the analysis that we received from our central staff, policy staff, as well as fiscal on the 10 remaining agreements between the county and Dan Gilbert's companies, multiple companies that he has formed related to the new Criminal Justice Center that includes the new jail. I would expect by the middle to end of July, virtually everything will be completed. Residents who have Wayne County issues are encouraged to contact my office by calling 313-224-8855 or by email at district12@wayncity.com if any issues they have. And last item I'll mention is my last coffee hour, as well as the one that I have every month with Representative Kozowski. Will be at the Big Boy Restaurant at 9:00 a.m. on Monday, June 11th. And that'll be the last one before the summer break. Then in the fall, they'll resume on the same schedule, the second Monday of every month. Any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. Thank you all.
Thanks, Glenn. Devin.
Hello, everybody. My name's Devin Adams. For those who don't know, I'm the Controller for the City of Westland. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to take a moment to help advertise the up and coming Relay for Life events, as well as the City of Westland's tree planting program. This Saturday, June 9th, the city will be hosting its annual Relay for Life event, which is located at Arttan Park, just up the road, at 1901 Carlson. The event will begin at 11:00 a.m. and will end at 7:00 a.m. the following Sunday. Team Wild Walkers is looking forward to seeing you all there. With preparation of this event, the city will also be hosting its fourth annual Police vs. Fire Dodgeball fundraiser, which will be held on Thursday, June 7th, at Airtime Trampoline. This event will begin at 5:30 p.m. and should last about an hour. For the record, the police is leading the series two games to one, so come join us so we can, if we can see that the fire department can even things up. For those of you who don't know, Airtime Trampoline is located up the street at 36901 Warren Road, here in Westland. Admission is $5 to watch the, to watch the event. All proceeds will benefit the American Cancer Society through Mayor Wild's Team Wild Walkers. Again, we hope to see you all there. From this event and including our three-on-three basketball tournaments, to our few hot dog fundraisers and our many sponsors, the city's Team Wild Walkers has helped raise over $20,000 to benefit the American Cancer Society in just a few years. So with that, I just wanted to take a quick moment to thank everybody for their continued support for this cause over the last couple of years. So and again, we're looking forward to seeing you guys on Thursday, June 7th, and Saturday, June 9th. With regards to the tree planting program, as you all know, we began this program last year. And to date, we have planted over 200 trees throughout the city so far. With this program, residents have a choice of three different tree types, the Red Sunset Maple, the Autumn Blaze Maple, and a Cleveland Pear. The total cost of a tree is $95, which includes delivery, installation, and a one-year warranty. Right now, we eliminate orders to one tree per household, and all trees will be planted in the city's right-of-way in front of participating homes. All trees, or orders can be placed online by visiting cityofwestland.com or by filling out the standard over-the-counter form. I'm the city's direct point of contact for this program, so if there's any further questions or concerns, I can be reached directly at 734-467-7920. Forms for this program and flyers for the dodgeball event are available to all in the lobby here at City Hall, so feel free to grab one on your way out tonight. Again, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'll be brief, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to field any. Thank you, everybody.
We'll move on to citizens' questions or input on the agenda. Citizens will be recognized before the business of the meeting commences to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Citizens are asked to limit their questions or input to three minutes. Is there anyone on my left?
Thank you. Good evening, Council Kevin Coleman. Just item D, approval of bid for upgrade to city's current dark trace security appliance device. What's that for? And then, item six, I just want to congratulate and thank Michael E. Williams for serving on the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Anyone on my right?
On the consent calendar, item C, approval of bid for Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center pond drainage system project. Can you explain what that is? Because there's a few houses on the, in the parking lot that is affected by the drainage. And one of them says his garage floods every year or so, or every time he turns around. If you could explain that, I'd appreciate it. Item D, approval of bid to upgrade the city's current dark trace security appliance device. What is that exactly and what is it for, like Kevin asked? And item E, I have a real problem with approval of professional service agreement with the Vassili Group LLC for construction inspection. I don't like outsourcing, so I have a problem with it. That's it.
Anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments on the agenda and move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? There were questions on item C and D. Item C, Joanne, did you want to?
Thank you, through the Council President. This is for repair in the interior courtyard. The grating is actually going towards the building, and so one of the classrooms floods pretty significantly. That classroom is rented out to one of our partner nonprofits. And so this drainage system will be to repair that flooding issue.
Okay, and then item D, Craig?
Thank you, Council President. Item D has to do with a security device that we use for monitoring internal network traffic. As everybody is aware, security is built in layers, and most security is treated as a wall on the outside. If something gets through the wall, though, how do you know what's happening on the inside? This is the security guards on the inside that allows us to see if there's suspicious traffic, for example, on the network. We do currently have the device in place at a lower cost. It didn't fit the needs of what we need for the traffic that the city has, so we do require an upgrade.
Is there any questions from the council? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Request from Harbor Freight Tools to conduct a temporary sales event in the parking lot of their property located at 34600 Warren Road from June 8th through June 10th, 2018, between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Request from Buffalo Wild Wings to host a fundraising event in the parking lot of their property located at 6677 North Wayne Road on August 4th, 2018, between 11:00 a.m. and 2:00 a.m. Approval of bid for Jefferson Barnes Community Vitality Center pond drainage system project. Administration recommends low bidder KJP Roofing in the amount of $17,675. Approval of bid for upgrade to the city's current dark trace security appliance device. Administration recommended interim CIO in the amount of $2,175 per month. Approval of professional services agreement with Uchelli Group LLC for construction inspection support services. Contract is for three years and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute on behalf of the city. Approval of Home Building Trades Partnership Agreement between the City of Westland and SER Metro Detroit Youth Build Program to build and/or rehabilitate one property at 2111 Emerson Court, to be sold to an eligible home buyer, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement, and the Director of Housing and Community Development to sign all other documents on behalf of the city. Approval of Home Building Trades Partnership Agreement between the City of Westland and the Wayne Westland Community Schools Construction Technology Program to build and/or rehabilitate one property at 33543 Hyvely, to be sold to an eligible home buyer, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement, and the Director of Housing and Community Development to sign all other documents on behalf of the city. Approval of intergovernmental agreement between the cities of Westland and Garden City concerning Westland properties that receive water service from Garden City and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to authorize on behalf of the city. Approval of request to reprogram CDBG home and NSP funds as follows. From the 2017-18 program income, $5,000, to the 2018 Great Futures Summer Camp in the amount of $5,000. Adoption of prepared resolution authorizing the disposition of one property, 32250-52 Hillsdale Court, acquired through the Neighborhood Stabilization Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs to the adjoining property owners and/or eligible home buyers, and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign the quitclaim deed, and the Director of Housing and Community Development to sign the closing documents for the sale of these properties. On behalf of the city, and the mayor and city clerk will sign the quitclaim deed on behalf of the city. The last item on the consent calendar, introduction of ordinance 248A86 and ordinance to amend ordinance 248 to show CB1 district classification where GAR is now shown in the area situated in the City of Westland described as parcel number 007010599307, which is north side of Warren, west of Merriman. This is planning department number 2203, and the rezoning was approved by City Council April 16, 2018. Moving to new business, item one, minutes of regular meeting held May 21, 2018.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammonds?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbell?
Abstain.
New business, item two, adoption of 2018-2019 proposed fiscal year budget. A public hearing was held May 7, 2018.
Is there a motion?
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, City Council. Just a couple of quick highlights on the budget, if we can.
Sure.
All right, thank you. First of all, as we move towards the, hopefully the adoption of the budget, I just wanted to thank everybody on the finance team. They work around, they work on this thing year-round. It seemed like as soon as they finish up with the budget, they jump right in the audit and then they're right back on the budget again. But Steve Smith, our finance director, has done an incredible job putting together a budget that I think that the residents of Westland will be very proud of. Dan Block, our new budget director, Mike Reddy, my deputy mayor, the directors, they all had a big part in putting together this balanced budget. And I appreciate the input from City Council as we worked through the process and also those in the public that actually came out and joined us for those public meetings and also called their office once they saw the budget that was online. But the 2018-19 proposed budget for the general fund, it's a $66 million balanced budget, and it's something that we're very proud of. The budget also adds over $700,000 to the city's rainy day fund, which brings our budget surplus to $7.3 million. So you can see we're creeping up above that 10% ratio, which is something that we always try to stay above. With that said, there's also, a lot of people, they ask us about the budget when we say it's $66 million, but they say we know it's more than that. Actually, there's another $13.9 million. It's part of a special revenue fund budget. $1.7 million for capital outlay funds, which is a separate budget, and $306,000 for debt service, which is outside of the general fund as well. Part of this year's budget included property taxes increasing by 2.6%. And I know that most homeowners, when they get their assessments, they're going to be up a lot more than that. But because of the caps on taxable values through the state, through Headley, the property taxes to the City of Westland increased 2.6%, which is a good thing because that's new revenue coming in. And a lot of that actually came from the new homes that have been built in the City of Westland over the last couple of years. There's also revenue, this is one-time revenue, so we have to be careful with these type of sales, but we have a, we have a sale of the cell tower behind the police station in this year's budget for $1.4 million. And also other good news from the state was that state shared revenue increased over 5% from last year's budget. So all in all, we had a little bit of good news there on the revenue side. One thing that would kind of just like to highlight is that while this is a very conservative budget, we were able to put dollars into the budget, working with the council to, we're going to do infrastructure improvements throughout the year, and we're going to be updating a lot of our equipment at DPS, which is something that we've been working our way through. We're also going to be improving, or we're going to be adding some new police and fire vehicles. There's going to be dollars in the budget for park improvements, for improvements to the Westland Friendship Center. There's also some money in there for some improvements to the court building. And on top of that, roads, water mains, sewer main lining, and several other things which are part of the water and sewer budget. The budget also adds dollars for, so we can add four new dispatchers. The cost is going to be spread over the four communities that are part of our joint dispatch. And I know this is going to be a relief because we've been stretched pretty thin in dispatch for a while and kind of getting by with overtime. So this will be much added relief for those folks that are on duty for us 24 hours a day. Just a couple of other highlights about this budget is that this budget also preserves funding for the four police officers that were part of a COPS grant. This is one of the things that we talked about when the COPS grant, the federal dollars ran out, we wanted to make sure that we were in a position to keep these four officers, and we were able to do that with this budget. And the same could be said about three firefighters that were part of a federal safer grant, too. So those positions will be preserved as well. And then working with City Council, we were able to supplement the firefighters overtime budget, too, to give us increased coverage on a nightly basis. There are no layoffs in this budget, and we haven't, that's a bad word, we haven't talked about that in a long time. So one thing that is good is that there are no increases to the city's millage rates in this proposed budget. It also includes a $300,000 additional payment towards the city's unfunded pension liability for our general employees. That's something that we're going to continue to do. It's actually something that we started over the last couple of years, is we're making our payment, which is required, plus also starting to chip away at it. So this will be an extra $300,000 that goes towards that. And with that, City Council, once again, on behalf of the administration, we appreciate working with the council to put together this budget. We think it's something that's fair, and we appreciate the input from council as we kind of worked our way through it. Thank you.
Thanks. Any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammonds?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbell?
Yes.
Prepared resolution spreading millage passes unanimously. New business, item four, adoption of capital improvement program as amended by council for 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammonds?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbell?
Yes.
Prepared resolution spreading millage passes unanimously. New business, item four, adoption of capital improvement program as amended by council for 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammonds?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbell?
Yes.
Capital improvement program passes unanimously. New business, item five, adoption of administrative fee schedule for 2018-2019 fiscal year.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Hart. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Hammonds?
Yes.
Councilman Hart?
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg?
Yes.
Councilman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Londo?
Yes.
President Godbell?
Yes.
Fee schedule passes unanimously. New business, item six, confirmation of reappointment of Michael E. Williams to the Westland Planning Commission for a three-year term with the term to expire May 18, 2021.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Mayor?
Yeah, Council, I'd just like to, I'd say that Michael Williams is in the audience here tonight. He's been a great addition to the Planning Commission. As I, you remember when I first introduced him, he's a former mayor of Albion, so you know he's a good guy. And he's also, his daytime job is, he's the CEO of a very successful nonprofit, it's Orchards Children's Services, and they do incredible work all throughout the state of Michigan. So we're very proud to put him up for a reappointment tonight.
Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Mr. Williams would like to stand and be recognized.
New business, item seven, confirmation of reappointment of Mayor William R. Wild as delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority for a one-year term effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Motion by Councilman Johnson, supported by Councilman Hersberg. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item eight, confirmation of reappointment of Steve Smith as alternate delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority for a one-year term effective July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hart, supported by Councilman Hammonds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item nine, approval of voucher.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Hersberg, supported by Councilman Londo. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Hearing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to citizens' comments. Citizens will be recognized at the end of the meeting immediately following the agenda item approval of vouchers. Citizens are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. All citizens wishing to speak will be heard. Is there anyone on my left? Anyone on my right? Anyone in the audience?
Good evening. Good evening. There was something that I heard in the pledge of allegiance tonight, and the use of the word liberty. And the use of that word means that citizens should have the freedom to either praise leadership, that means the elected officials, or to criticize the elected officials without being retaliated against. without being retaliated against in a harmful way. So that every meeting, we go through this pledge. And my hope that you would honor this aspect of liberty. I just want to refer back to the police report that Councilperson Green has filed in regards to me. In the interview with the deputy police chief, he had raised the question of me interfering with the mail, which was raised by Councilperson Green. And I just want to let you guys know that it is very hard to get through the structure of the post office, but you can get through and get the information that is needed. The information in that report and those emails is false. There is no report. She has filed no report in regards to me tampering with her mailbox or anybody else's mailbox in the City of Westland. And if you want to backcheck that, Marco Wells, who is the head of customer service at the Wayne, at the Westland Post Office, has that information. So that the email that was sent to the police chief in regards to that is not true. Also, I just want to talk about the question of that, as you approve these budgets, a lot of things come along with these budgets. Citizens are required to pay bills and pay those on time. And I've noticed that Councilperson Green has not paid her water bill since last April. And I think that you have an obligation to explain to the citizens of Westland why you have not fulfilled this obligation because the city has provided you with water, or if they didn't provide you with water, or if they didn't bill you. So I think that you have a responsibility to do that. And next week, I'll be talking about some other issues under that police report and what action that I'm going to take now.
Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Council President. For whatever reason, Arthur Warren, you continue to come to our council meetings with these charades every two weeks. It is a total embarrassment. I do not, for the life of me, understand what leadership qualities the mayor sees in you to represent our city. But I will tell you that there is a complaint against you with the U.S. Post Office. And should the police department ask me for a copy, I will produce it. You actually, in a... You are a representative of our city, so your actions can actually cause litigation for the City of Westland because the mayor has appointed you as a representative, and you have went to congressional meetings, you have went to county meetings, and you get up and you address the crowd and the audience as a representative of Westland. I'm not sure what your issue is with me. I never knew you before I ran for office. You continue to harass me from the day I ran, and you continue to do it now. I don't know what you see when you look at me, but I am a woman. You are a grown man, and you are harassing me. I have asked you to leave me alone. So if you value this all-American city that the mayor continues to allow you to represent, although your actions would be considered rogue, and if this were the private sector, you would likely have already been fired because there are many people who have raised issues with your unprofessionalism, even at the Westland Democratic Club, which you are the president of. Your actions are inappropriate. So I would appreciate you to take whatever action you feel necessary, whether legal, personal, whatever, because I will if you continue. What has happened is you all have finally come across someone who was going to stand up. And I'm not going to allow you to harass me, try to intimidate me, to go in my mailbox, to send out letters with the city seal on it as a representative of Westland yet again with untruths. In terms of my water bill, that is my personal business, and that is how it will be handled. But thank you for bringing that to the attention of the citizens. And I'm going to ask you again, as a grown man, to just leave me alone. You don't support me. You have lied on me throughout the state. And there are several executives, even within our county, who now frown upon your actions. And just so you know, the 36th District Court has a copy of that complaint I filed with the U.S. Postal Service. And also, one of my neighbors did as well. So please, this is not the place. So I would ask that, since the mayor continues to allow you to do this as a leader in our city, that you would have a conversation with him because you can cause this city litigation. And I'm not going to take it. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my right? Anyone on my left? Anyone else in the audience? We'll close citizens' comments and move on to comments from the administration. Mayor?
Thank you, City Council. Before I start, I would just say that, to the chair to the councilwoman, is that rest assured, any comments that Mr. Warren is making are independent of the administration or any board that he sits on. So I appreciate the fact that you pointed that out about six different times. But obviously, anything he says, just like anybody else in the audience, is independent of anything that we're doing. So if there's anything from us, it'll come directly from me. With that, I'd just like to, first of all, just start off by saying that it was pretty cool to see the Inspire Theater here tonight. And when they kind of broke into song, it kind of reminded me going to one of our Rotary Clubs. When you go to the Rotary Club, they always, they lead off with songs. So it's nice to see them come out here tonight and promote their upcoming event. It was nice that Devin came out and promoted Relay for Life, which is, once again, it's going to be this weekend in Westland. Anybody that would like to join a team, if you're not part of a team, there's still time. The kickoff is 11:00 a.m., and you can certainly join my team, the Wilds Walkers team. We'll be gathering about 10:30 in our campsite, so you can certainly come walk with us, or you could probably join any team as you come out that day. Hopefully, the residents had a chance to notice over Memorial Day weekend, all the hard work that our Parks and Recreation Director, Brian Harnos, and the Department of Public Service put into trying to make all of our parks sparkle, and we're ready for Memorial Day weekend. The H2O Zone actually had a record weekend with over $5,500 in revenue generated between the H2O Zone and the concession stand, which will be much needed. So the parks all look pretty good. If you do see something that needs a little bit of work, still let us know because over the next couple of weeks, we'll be putting any of the finishing touches on those that we need to. I'd like to also recognize the Westland Historical Commission for just what an incredible job they did creating the Eloise Hospital Museum at the Historical Village Park. If you have not had a chance to see it, I know that there was a ribbon cutting that's starting to play on WLND this week. But on Saturdays, every Saturday, the entire park is open, but you really have to go check out the Eloise Museum. If you haven't, even if you're not sure what Eloise is, the history and just the amount of work that these... I mean, this thing is really, really nice. So if you get a chance, take a look at it. Speaking of the DPS Department, I'd like to thank them for their work in the recent Free Drop Bulk Off, or the Free Bulk Drop Off Day at the DPS, which was on May 19th. Even though we had a little bit of rain there in the beginning, we had 678 vehicles which were processed in the event. And this was the fourth time we'd done this event, and this was our busiest one yet. And they disposed of approximately 100 tons of unwanted materials. So a lot of stuff, I think that that really justifies the council's decision to bring back bulk pickup at the curb because we can see that Westland generates a lot of this stuff. We also had, the Wayne Ford Civic League helped us with 43 residents that were either seniors or disabled that weren't able to bring materials to the drop-off site. So they picked up stuff from 43 different cities. And a lot of people ask us, what does something like this cost? It looks like the total of cost for that day, estimated cost were about $15,000, which is pretty much in line with what the other ones cost. So all in all, I think it was a very successful day. Council, thank you for moving forward on the budget tonight. And your unanimous vote is something that the administration takes pride in. We appreciate working with you. And there were a lot of things that were brought up during the budget that we'll definitely take into consideration as we start working on the next budget. I mentioned state shared revenue was up in this past year. While the specific details have not been publicly released, we're hopeful that the higher-than-expected revenues at the state of Michigan in their recent revenue estimates, it looks like there's a possibility that the legislature might restore the supplemental statutory revenue sharing payment that the governor had recommended eliminating. So if that goes through, which we're hoping it does, that's another $6.2 million that's spread out across the state. So there may be additional dollars in state shared revenue coming to the City of Westland too. And then just the last two things is, I would like to thank both the Westland City Council and the Garden City City Council for recently passing an inter-local government agreement, which is going to change the water bills for about 75 residents that live in the City of Westland that have been receiving their water from Garden City for quite a period of time. At some point over the last couple of years, as Garden City had changed their water rates, Westland residents were paying about 1.5 times the rate that Garden City residents were paying, even though the water was the same. So we appreciate Garden City's Mayor Randy Walker for walking this through on his side to a unanimous support from the city council. And also, President Godbell, thank you for your work moving this through the Westland City Council. So, and city council, I know I don't have to tell you that those folks that have been affected by this have certainly let us all know over the years. So that's something that, it took a little bit of time, but we finally got that fixed. Then the last thing is, city council, tonight we brought a sample of the new wayfinding signs, and you can see those down here in front of the city council. This is something that we've been working on for a while. In August of 2017, the wayfinding sign package was completed and approved by both the Tifa and the DDA boards. So you're going to start to see over the next several months a variety of sign types to create a welcoming system to the city and also trying to show more professional manner, but also kind of improve on our brand and kind of help us brand the city a little bit more. You're going to see in the Tifa District, six shop and dine district identification signs and eight of the wayfinding signs, which is a sample of what we have here tonight. And then in the DDA, their first phase is going to include 18 wayfinding signs. The bids were received last Thursday. They're currently being reviewed. And we expect the DDA and the Tifa to approve a contractor in June. And construction and installation of these signs or signs should begin sometime in July. That's all we have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Anything from the city attorney's office?
Nothing from the city attorney's office, Council President.
Thanks. We'll begin council comments with Councilwoman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to start by thanking Michaela for leading the pledge tonight. She did a great job and has a very bright future. I would also, because of the timing and date-wise, wish every father, godfather, mentor, father representative, a happy Father's Day that is coming up in a couple of weeks, on June 17th, and it is the Sunday before our next council meeting. So happy early Father's Day. I'd also like to thank the administration, those who are still here for answering my questions on the consent calendar. We had a pretty long consent calendar this time around, and I asked plenty of questions. And I thank you all for getting back to me before the start of today's meeting. So thank you. Also, just wanted to announce that one of the things in our budget, some of you may already be aware, but if you're not, one of the things that we council did approve is a $50 monthly stipend that will be paid for every person sitting on a commission going forward, and that will take effect July the 1st. So if you are currently on a commission, you can expect a monthly stipend of $50 a month for your service. And if you are not on a commission, but you would like to consider volunteering for the city, you can visit our website at cityofwestland.com. We have plenty of city commission openings, looking for people daily. And again, you can apply right online on the website and then just follow up. But we will start offering a monthly stipend of $50 as of July. And my final comment is just to, through the chair to the mayor in terms of Arthur Warren, and I appreciate your comment in terms of his comments being independent of the city. He has not only documented that he is a representative of Westland, he has attended multiple meetings that are on record and recorded, that he has stated that he's a Westland representative. He is on multiple commissions that you appointed him to. There are multiple people in the community that have filed complaints against him because of his lack of professionalism and abusive mannerism. I have sat in on Westland Democratic Clubs and watched him yell at the top of his lungs at people. And I've also watched him throw a gentleman with a disability out of a Westland Democratic Club meeting for turning on his cell phone to record the discussion because he didn't feel that that was appropriate, which was a violation of the Open Meetings Act. There are multiple people that I have talked to in the community that are willing to speak to his actions should it get to that point. So I would encourage the city to have a serious discussion with him. And I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilman Hammond.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to thank our firefighters for working throughout the year to raise funds to give back to the community. Guys do an outstanding job. And seeing these young men and women up here getting scholarships was outstanding. And it looks like they're going to have a positive effect on our community. So thanks again for putting the scholarship committee together and giving out some scholarships. So thank you. I also want to thank Michael Williams for your service on the planning commission and congratulate you. And that's it for me tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Hart.
Thank you, Council President. Again, I'd like to thank the Fire Department for reinvesting into the community. It's a big part of the entire community package, and it's commendable for what you guys do, being active in those young students' lives so that they can go ahead and continue on the right path. And a little bump going through school makes a big difference. A lot of time, it's a difference between not even starting. So giving that ability to launch, a lot of times, will just make the entire difference. Really quick, I'd like to encourage everybody to go check out the Westland Municipal Golf Course. I myself have been there twice already this year. And they have a new special going out Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays in June from noon till close. 15 bucks for a cart and nine holes. Can't beat it. 15 bucks for a cart and nine holes. So my wife and I have been out there twice. So please go out there, and especially in hole number five, there's a red ball about this big. All right, if you find that, bring that back to me, please, All right, if you find that, bring that back to me, please, because I couldn't find it for the life of me. I'll pay it. And with that, I would like to thank my loving and Miss Longsuffering heart for 22 years of marriage and 25 years of being together yesterday. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Councilman Hart. Congratulations, and give those to your wife, and give her my condolences for playing up with you for 25 years. Got to go back to the firefighters again. Can't say enough about it. You guys do a great job. These kids deserve what you gave them. I hope they make careers out of it. But it's above and beyond when you start giving back to the community, and you guys have done that forever. I've been up here 11 years, and I've seen it 11 years in a row. Mr. Williams, thank you for your service also. You're finally going to get some money out of this, right, Tasha? $50 they're going to give you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Councilman Londo?
Thank you, President Godbaugh. I want to start by also congratulating Michael Williams for being reappointed to the Westland Planning Commission. It's a very important position, and you've proven to be a great leader on that board. And I want to thank you again for serving and look forward to working with you moving forward. Also, congratulations to the class of 2018 graduates. You made it, and now the fun really begins. I extend my best wishes for success in the months and years to come. And I want to congratulate the six young people tonight that were awarded scholarships. And thank you to our amazing fire department for continuing to give back to the community. That was amazing. The mayor mentioned the H2O Zone and the record crowds that we had out on Memorial Day weekend. You got to get out there and check it out with the kids if you can, and the park looks fantastic. Those soccer fields, we're resting those soccer fields this year to improve them for years to come, and they absolutely look incredible. And if you haven't seen the new Farmers Market Pavilion, the Lions Pavilion, and the War Memorial out there, get out there and check it out. Our constituent outreach meeting, or coffee hour, or whatever you want to call it, we're going to do Saturday, June 23rd, tentatively here at City Hall. We have to get that approved first, and then we'll announce it at the next meeting. With our council coffee hours, there's really no agenda or speeches. It's just a chance to come out and get to know your council people, voice questions, or voice, ask questions, voice concerns. And if you can't make the meetings, you can always reach out to us by either email or telephone. I'm glad Devin was here tonight to bring up the Boots First Badges Dodgeball Game, which I'll be playing in again for the third straight year. I'll be sore on Friday. So come on out to Airtime Trampoline and Game Park on Thursday and watch the firefighters battle the police department in a very epic dodgeball match. And all proceeds benefit Relay for Life, which is this Saturday and Sunday at Tatten Park, which they also mentioned. Very passionate about that, that cause, as many of us have been affected by cancer. I encourage those in the community to join us, remember lost loved ones, honor survivors of all cancers, and raise money to help the American Cancer Society. And then lastly, on the budget, I'd like to thank my colleagues in the administration for working together for the many long hours. And to get into this point tonight, and I want a big thank you to our finance team, Steve Smith, Budget Director Dan Block, Deputy Mayor Ready, and the entire, the entire team for their tireless efforts and for answering all the many questions that we had throughout the sessions. As for police and fire, I didn't answer that question at the last meeting. I was rambling on about a bunch of other stuff. So I just wanted to put it out there that I'm 100% behind police and fire, giving them all the personnel and resources that they need to keep us all safe. And I also wanted to, let's take a look here. During one of the budget study sessions, e-bills for water and sewer came up. The administration developed a process for residents to sign up to go paperless. So if you like to go paperless and no longer receive that bill in the mail, there's a sign advertising the new bills here at City Hall at the front desk by the cashiers. Or you can go to the website at cityofwestland.com/department/finance. And it describes the process at the bottom to sign up for the form online. The water newsletter also includes wording that will advertise this new process as well. With that, happy Father's Day to everyone out there, and happy anniversary to Councilman Hart. And I lost a few of those golf balls with you that day, so thank you.
Councilman Hersberg?
Thank you. I'll start by just reiterating, we're going to have that coffee hour again, June 23rd, right here at City Hall at noon. So if you guys want to come up to the front doors, we'll be here. I'm not sure if we'll have it here in the lobby or in the council chambers or in the boardroom. But Councilman Londo and myself will be here, June 23rd at noon for the coffee hour. And if a third council member wants to join us, you're welcome to do so. On the budget, there were a lot of things talked about this year that we didn't necessarily follow through on. Last year, we had talked about setting up maybe some visioning sessions before the budget process begins. So I'd like to see that later this year or early next year, before the budget process begins, if we can sit down as a council and start to look at some of the issues that, and some of the things we talked about this year that didn't get done. I think that would be a great benefit. And lastly, the tree planting program that we approved a year and a half ago or so. We approved, I think about 1,000 trees we approved. So it's, I can't believe only 200 people called in and got them, so there's quite a few left. The price is $95 for delivery, installation, one-year warranty. They're huge trees. If you want to buy something similar on the market yourself, it's going to be $300 to $400. So it's, it's much better to go through the city, get on the city website and place your order. And as well as the boards and commissions, we still need people to step forward and get involved. Thank you.
Thanks. I'd like to start by thanking Makayla Hudson for leading us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. I'd also like to congratulate the six students who were the recipients of the firefighter scholarships that were presented earlier this evening. I too would like to thank the administration, but in particular Steve Smith and Dan Block for all their work and responses during the budget process. This was Dan's first, first swing at a budget as the new budget director, and he did a great job. And we'll, you know, we'll beat him up later on again. So, but he, you know, got back to everybody very quickly. And, you know, with all the information that was requested. And so it's much appreciated for all their work and effort. And I too would like to thank all my colleagues for the time and effort put into the budget. It's, you know, it's one of those deals where it's, everybody's got their own opinion, everybody's got their own agenda. There's lots of ideas flying around. I don't think everybody's happy with everything that's in the budget, which means it's probably a pretty good budget. Because when there's, when there's disagreements on individual items, but as a whole, we come together and support a balanced budget that remains balanced into the future, at least as it, in its current state. So again, thanks to all my colleagues for, for working on the budget as well. Congratulations and thanks to Mr. Williams for continuing to serve on the Planning Commission. You do a great job, and we greatly appreciate it. And I'd also like to thank Peter for the job well done while I was absent from the last meeting. I watched the meeting. You did a great job, and I heard from several residents that you did a great job as well. So thanks again for, for filling in for me at the last meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?